Welcome to the July 11th Board Meeting. The Evergreen Public Schools Board of Directors, please rise with me and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, okay. Now, my paper here says Director Weatherspoon has our land acknowledgement, but I believe, do you have Sullivan?
Thank you. The Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples in the Cowlets Tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our communities.
Thank you Sullivan. I need just a moment to pull up the board docs if you don't mind. I would like to ask that the Board excuse President Julie Boconegra from the meeting. Action requires a motion.
I move that we, that we excused Director Boconegra from this Board meeting.
Seconded.
So that was moved by Director Bradford and seconded by Director Weatherspoon. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed? She is excused.
What about Jenny?
Oh, now we're going to move to Jenny Gronwald. Is there a motion to excuse?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion and second to excuse Director Gronwald. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? That's two unanimous. Alright, the next item on our agenda is to adopt the agenda for the evening.
I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Director Weatherspoon moves.
Second.
And Director Bradford seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed? Ready? Okay. Is the door locked outside? I don't think so. Okay. Alright. The next item on our agenda is our Board Consent Agenda. Action requires a motion.
I move for approval of the Board Consent Agenda as presented.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Consent Agenda.
I move that we approve the Superintendent Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? An aye vote, aye. Okay. That passes as well. The next item on our agenda, this is going quickly, is a presentation for our Capital Projects update. John?
Yes, and I'm going to call our Senior Director of Facilities Nicole de Tulsa up here to introduce our presenters today.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Board. I just wanted to quickly just make a shout out to our facilities maintenance team as well as our contractors and R&amp;C management for all the great work they've been doing thus far this summer for all of our smaller capital renewal projects that they are just, they hit the ground running and will hopefully, and they will be done, before school starts. So I just wanted to give a quick congratulations and for all their hard work. The presentation this evening will start with R&amp;C Management with Adam Cormack on just a brief quarterly update and then we'll conclude with Basetti Architects to do a review of the music room projects at Union High School and Evergreen High School. So with that, I will pass it on to Adam.
Let's see if it works. Alright, there we go.
Alright.
I'm going to be really brief. Like Nicole said, I just want to give a brief update. This is the same document that you guys received last month, so I think you've had an opportunity to already kind of go through it and review it. And then I'm going to turn it over to Basetti and they're going to give you more of a detailed update on kind of where we are and how we got where we are today with the music rooms at the Union and Evergreen High School. So, in general, we haven't seen, haven't seen you guys' face in a little while. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. A lot of good things are still happening out there with the capital projects. We are hitting the ground running, like we said, at the capital renewal projects. We have just firing on all cylinders out there with all the different projects. So there's a ton of projects going on from the capital renewal standpoint, and then still a couple of active projects. So as attached, you'll see the schedule, you'll see the budget, and then I'm just going to hit on just a couple of projects real quick. Burton Elementary School, obviously you guys know we had a successful opening over winter break last year. We're just working on some final punch lists and warranty items out there and trying to get that all turned over to the district. Fully, fully complete. Mill Plain, Derek here's the project manager out there, he's pushing that along. We are in great shape. We've had a couple, we've had quite a few challenges along the way, but we're in really good shape, ready to start the furniture move-in and start the furniture, or move from old mill to, or old, the site to the new site, so sorry. So yeah, all's going well there. We're still on schedule to have kids come back this fall, so we're excited about that. There's a couple photos up here. These are, like I said, about 30 days old, so we're quite a bit further than these, but just a few little photos for you to see, just an existing site. So the site is coming together and the building's really coming together, so. Mountain View, like, opened last fall, we're just, again, just working through some warranty and some punch list items out there. Skanska is really doing a really good job to finish, along with LSW to kind of get those, all those miscellaneous last items fixed and repaired and warranty items, so. Same at Y East, we, as you know, we had, unfortunately, over last winter, we had one of the air handler units that was damaged from some cold weather, so we were able to get that replaced this summer, and then there's a handful of other warranty and items going on out there, so. Heritage, same thing, we're doing a handful of warranty items out there, just trying to finish that. I was out there yesterday, that site is just an absolute fantastic site now that everything has kind of come together with the fields and the classroom addition and everything, so it's, it's a real beautiful site out there. So if you haven't been out there, I'd recommend you get out there and take a look at it. And then just capital renewals, I already hit on that, but yeah, we, we hit the ground running and we're moving things through a lot of different projects and we're, other than a few challenges with mechanical procurement, procurement still is a challenge out there, it's just, it's just, it is what it is, so we're, have Plan Bs and Plan Cs to finish well so that we, kids are coming back one way or the other, so we have those plans in place. And then that's just a list of it, we don't need to go through that. And then the transportation facility, I don't know if you folks have been, had an opportunity to go out there, obviously the building is gone, the footings are in place, the structure is starting to go up at the administrative area, they're kind of working from the west to the east. A lot of the off-site work has already started, if not complete, and they're, you're going to start seeing that signal go in in the next 30 days or so. So a lot of exciting things going on out there. We did run into a handful of unforeseen's, unfortunately, there's just a lot of stuff that was below grade that we ran into. We addressed it, we resolved it, and we've moved forward. We thought we were going to lose a little bit on schedule, our contractor out there, Robinson Construction's done a fantastic job to push on their subs and get us back to on schedule, and so we're scheduled to finish that spring break, move the folks in spring break. Once we move the staff in and get them moved over, we plan to demo the existing building and then August, September will be wrapped up with the site work and demolishing of the existing, so good work out there. There's a few photos, I'd get out, this, these are again, a bit out of date, so I skip right through them, but if you have a chance, take a look out there. So, music rooms, this obviously is an additional bond-saving project. I'm just going to hit on a few high level and then I'm going to turn it over to Basetti. But, schedule-wise, we are on schedule for turning that over winter of 2024, and so we've, we've had, we've, as you, as you guys approved, we did fund that project. Originally, when we built that project, we weren't sure what that was going to look like. After we got through the pre-design phase, we kind of better understood what that scope was, and so we were able to, with the fortunate, you know, savings, bond savings, we were able to increase that project to, and we're through schematic design, in design development, and we're just, we, we've got Emmerich, the general contractor on board there, a CMGC, GCCM contractor that's helping us make sure that we're on budget and the logistics, and it's going to be a challenging project. You'll see when we go through the presentation, just being an onsite, it's going to be a challenging project, so Emmerich's doing a fantastic job along with the Basetti team to just kind of set us up for success and make sure we're looking through the eyes of safety and security and all those other items, so. Unless there's any questions, I'll turn it over to Basetti. If you guys have any questions, clarifications, if there's anything that comes up after, don't hesitate to shoot us an email or give us a call, whatever we can do to help.
Adam, I know there was an issue with the fence at Mill Plain in the back part, that, between the neighborhoods.
Yes.
Can you describe the issue and the solution?
Yeah, there was an existing fence that was not structurally sound, I think it was a CMU, so we went through a lot of different options and we were looking for safety, security, but also the most cost-effective, and that, that scope of work is completed now, right? Yeah, so they ended up going, worked with a lot of different options with the civil and the architect and the neighbors, and we landed on just a typical cyclone fence, which I think is a win-win for everyone from a maintenance and a long stand, so no longer a safety, security standpoint out there.
Was that the slapped fence that was on the north side? The giant brick?
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of locations that were tilting, the footings just weren't secure, so it was a-
And it sounded like the city came in and basically condemned it and said, yeah.
I don't know if they condemned, they, yeah.
Okay.
It's the one that's bordering 164th?
No, the one that's around, between the neighborhood and the school.
Okay, so, on the north side?
Yeah, on the north side.
Okay.
And I think for the most part, you know, there were some concerns with the neighborhood, but I think Nicole did a really good job of handling those and-
For sure.
-to folks' satisfaction, hopefully.
Yeah, thank you. Alright.
Oh, each of your, each of your slides said temporary certificate of occupancy is, when do the permanent ones come in?
I will update that. Is this working? Yeah, I'll update that. We do have some of the final certificate, there's some site and some street stuff that had to get done at Burton and a couple other projects, so I might have missed that. I'll get that updated and send it over to you.
Thank you.
Well, it is a testimony to the good work you guys have been doing, that we came in under budget so we could add these other projects that were highly needed but not, you know, feasible on our original bond proposal, so I'm pretty impressed with that.
Yeah, it, it's a team effort, if, it was a whole team, contractors, architects, the district, the facilities, like, good leadership, good board, it, it took a, it took a team to do it, but we were super grateful and thankful we got to be a part of it, so.
Alright, so, click forward is the, go at the top?
Right here, right there and there.
There, okay. I am not technically gifted, so. My, my name's Lydia Burns, I'm with Basetti Architects, and I'm delighted to be here today to share a little bit about our pre-design and schematic design process and where we're at for the music addition process, or music additions at Union and Evergreen. And, sorry, we couldn't join you on the 13th of June, but here we are on the 11th of July. Alright, let's see. What am I doing wrong here, Adam?
I just do this.
Aha, okay. So, when, when we came on with the project originally, the program scope had been advertised as like a 3,500 square foot addition. We discovered early on in our process through stakeholder engagement with the district music staff and music staff at both schools, that really what was needed was a slightly larger addition to make sure we were providing enough support space for, for both of these music rooms. So the program scope that we're talking about here is showing that we're going to be having additions that are in the range of 4,000 to 4,500 square feet at each high school, so to accommodate that music classroom and the support space that's necessary for, for it. And the overall cost of work for the contractor, this is not the overall project budget, but the, the cost of work was, was increased to 9.2 million earlier this year to accommodate that. And this just is a graphic representation of our schedule, like Derek, like Adam was already describing, that we are aiming for a, actually, this looks like the draft, Adam. The slides, sorry, this looks like, doesn't look like our final copy, but just, it's okay, it's okay, we're good. Where it says April 2025, just imagine that says January of, December of 2024, our, we're looking for a winter move-in over the winter break. Alright, and just to give you a little idea about our design process, so during pre-design, we, we walked the site with our stakeholders, looking at proposed locations for where this addition might, might land. The key project goal was to make sure we're providing equitable space at this school, just like we have at other high schools across the district. And through that stakeholder engagement process, it was determined that at this particular school, that the addition would be designed for band. And that helped us understand what the needs were going to be during, during further future design phases. But, really, when we were looking at the locations, one of the things that was most important to the stakeholders was to make sure that we were keeping the new music addition close to the other music spaces in, in the school already and providing equitable backstage access for, for this new addition. So we looked at two locations, you can see them, they're circled in red, the lower, lower left-hand red circle that shows the southeast corner of the courtyard, that is the location that was determined the most feasible for our addition. We did also look at the performing arts entrance and determined that was not as feasible of a, of a location. And this represents our planned concept that we landed with in pre-design and had, has had further development in schematic design. As you can see, it, it provides close proximity and along the same corridor to the, the bandroom, the, now the orchestra room, which is just to the right of it, and further down the hall to the choir room. The yellow spaces that you see highlighted there is an office in the lower left-hand corner, and then we also have some storage space that's meant for percussion storage, and three practice rooms. It's very similar to, the, the facilities are being provided at Mountain View High School and at Heritage. This location provided opportunity to be more central and, and provide more of a face to the rest of the school for the music program. It's facing the central courtyard, and it also has adequate access for load-in and load out to a existing loading area that's right behind the space. These are a couple of conceptual renderings that we, we did to show what that space might feel like, so you can see, actually, this is interesting. These slides are really our draft. They're not our final copy. This is actually Evergreen. Okay, these are a little bit out of order. So anyway, our, our final rendering for schematic design, this gives you an idea of what this might look like in final concept. The, the goal here was to make sure that we're fitting in with the existing architecture that is already very strong context at Union High School, to make sure we're fitting in and not providing too much of a contrast. So the proposal is to have a pretty simple brick box that is, is very in keeping with the architecture that surrounds it and not taking away from the, the massing of the existing commons space that is just to the, to the south. And there's opportunity to have glazing towards the courtyard that could be opened up and even provide an informal presentation or, or performance space. Moving on to Evergreen, so Evergreen is an older school, as you all well know, it has been added on to many times over time, and that presented some challenges in trying to find a, a good place to put this addition. The original RFQ that came out, that we had responded to, if you see where the gray circle is at the top of the screen there, that was where the addition was proposed to maybe be placed. In talking to stakeholders during this, this pre-design process, that was determined to be very far away from the other music rooms and would be challenging for making sure that the music program was feeling cohesive. And it also is providing challenges for how far students would have to go to get to the, to the stage. So we looked at some other options. You'll see that there's one circle that has a number one in it and a number two, and then there's another one that is a gray circle at the bottom. We looked at all, all of those locations, each of them provided their own challenges. In the end, the circle number two was the preferred location, this is a underutilized courtyard that is just to the west of the existing library. It's centrally located, it, it provides the most, the most close access to the other music rooms that we could get on this, near the same corridor, and equitable backstage access for all three music rooms. So again, the key project goal was to make sure we're providing equitable, equitable space at this school, just like all the other high schools at Evergreen Public Schools. And through the stakeholder engagement with this particular high school, we discussed the existing rooms and how they were functioning, and it was decided that this particular space would be designed for orchestra. So here you can see the floor plan in context, so to your right on the screen is the existing library. You'll notice that, if you're familiar with the school, the, there's a corridor, main corridor that runs north-south from the administration entrance, north through the building where the library would be on your right. This particular diagram is showing an idea that is being explored as an alternate that might envision opening up the library in a different manner. This was an idea that was brought up during pre-design as, as a wish list. But the main focus of our project as a base bid is to provide an orchestra room with an office that you see in yellow in the upper right-hand corner, two practice rooms, and storage for violins and viola. The storage for bass and cello would be in the room on mobile carts, and I'm, I'm going to walk over here to the screen because I don't have a pointer, but there's, there's an existing clinic here that we needed to maintain access to, to make sure that they could still get to it from the outside without going through the school. So that was a consideration. I think one of the most challenging things with this particular school is the existing building and making sure that we're meeting the building code for exiting, so that is something that our team is working through to make sure that that's working, and we've been working closely with the city of Vancouver to, to discuss those challenges. So, this particular location, like I said earlier, provides the most central, closest access to the other music classrooms and the backstage entrance. We have opportunity for load-in and load-out direct to the exterior, which was a desire of the stakeholders. This particular area, since it's so central to the school and right close to the library, it provides, again, more, a more visible presence for the music program at the school, and it maintains the exterior entry to the clinic. Alright, so these renderings, this is mixed up, so these are actually Union. We had the slides mixed up in the draft, but I'm going to go back if you don't mind. Okay, so the lower left-hand corner here envisions what that space might look like at, at Evergreen where we're looking south, in this we're cutting through the, through the music room, through the corridor to where the library would be on your left. And both of these projects, I think the important thing is that we're making sure that from an acoustical standpoint, we're getting the proper volume of height for a music room, so the, having an addition is a great way to make sure that that's possible, because when you're trying to retrofit space in an existing school, that's more difficult. But, both projects will be designed so that the height is appropriate for the type of music that we're working with. And the image on your right would be kind of a conceptual image of what the inside of the room might look like with acoustical panels on the ceiling and the walls. And I'll zoom over to, this was Union, so, since you didn't get to see it earlier, the section here on the left is showing a cut that's going north-south, so the commons is on your left. And one goal of our project was to make sure that we were maintaining the, the clear storey windows that are in the commons space and make sure we're not covering them up, so the massing of the bandroom with the storage room next to it allowed us to do that. And again, a vision, a conceptual rendering of what it might look like inside with the acoustical treatment. Okay, and then back to Evergreen, so this is a rendering of a schematic design level of what this might look in context. The existing covered walks would be maintained in place and our, or our addition would be kind of recessive behind that to make sure that we're not calling attention to the addition to make it look like an entry as much as just making sure that it's fitting in context with its surroundings. So I will take any questions that anybody may have.
Are there any questions from the Board? I appreciate you coming to show, show this to us. Could you talk a little bit more about the process you used at Union that determined that it would be a bandroom instead of an orchestra room?
Yeah, so, in talking to the teachers and the principal and understanding how the rooms that are currently at Union and Evergreen, and we did this at both schools, we looked at how, how well were the rooms that they have already, how they're performing for the types of music that they're trying to do. And the, in the case of Union High School, what we heard was that the choir room is performing very well, that it's, it meets the needs. Orchestra, the, the bandroom that is used for both bandroom and orchestra seems to work very well for orchestra but not as well for band. So they talked about the size of the room and how it just wasn't quite deep enough and just maybe the acoustics weren't, weren't quite what, what was necessary, so in talking, in talking to everyone, that seemed to be the direction that they wanted us to go.
Were parents and students involved?
So we did not, we personally did not have parents and students involved in our conversations. We were, we were working with the stakeholders that we were assigned to, so that was the principal, all of the music teachers, and our district, district staff.
Okay. Is this sprucing up of the current bandroom plan for orchestra?
So, our understanding is that for orchestra, it works, works well, so at Union specifically, we did not talk about changing the room, the existing room. At Evergreen, however, that discussion has happened where the existing orchestra room-
Is there sprucing up of the current bandroom plan for orchestra?
So our understanding is that for orchestra, it works, works well. So at Union specifically, we did not talk about changing the room, the existing room. At Evergreen, however, that discussion has happened, where the existing orchestra room, I guess it's, it's used for orchestra and choir right now. The existing orchestra room is very acoustically bright, and it has many challenges acoustically. There was an acoustics report that was done last year, and the acquisition that's on our design team has also looked at it. So we have some recommendations of, of some things that could be done to that room, and that is something that the district is interested in looking at right now as an alternate, because it wasn't in the original budget. But that was something we've discussed, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
I have a quick question, and this is just like coming from me as like a music student. I saw in your plan for the Evergreen High School orchestra room to be next to the library. How would that acoustically work out?
So we, we understand, it doesn't really matter whether it's next to a library or any other space. We have to make sure that the, the walls and construction that is around any music room is acoustically separated. So our acquisition has given us recommendations of what those STC ratings would have to be between anything and the music room. And it goes down to what, what are the doors made out of, how are they sealed, whether or not we have windows and how those would be sealed, so that is being taken into consideration. In the case of both additions, we have to be very careful about not only acoustics, but because of the building code, we have to plan for code separation for fire code. So in the case of Evergreen, we actually have firewalls in between what would be the orchestra room and the corridor next to it in front of the library. So that will provide a pretty stout construction.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report. John?
Thank you, yes. A few items to report on. We had two just phenomenal days of professional development with our principals. At the end of the school year, after all of just an incredibly challenging school year for our, our principals, they just showed up and they dug in around how we're engaging with our strategic plan and ambitious instruction. So couldn't be happier with the way those two days went and how our principals showed up and associates and our school coaches showed up to help us really do a good job of implementing our strategic plan for, so we get outcomes for our students. So that was inspiring to me. We are moving forward with some work with our communications team around our strategic plan. We're working on some types of things for the, for the boardroom, working with Nicole and Craig to do some branding and get the word out and do some posters and different things at schools, to be able to do that. And we have plans to communicate that through social media, videos, decks, slide decks for our schools and principals, to be able to deliver to their staff. And we're working to align what our school improvement planning process is to our strategic plan, and that's really exciting work that's ongoing. As you know, we have, we lost two incredible employees. Dr. Williams, who's now the top educator in the state of Oregon, handpicked by the governor, so we're proud of her and we feel her loss. But that position was posted yesterday, so we'll do some recruiting and see how that goes. We'll post it on all of the appropriate job sites, websites, to be able to recruit for that position, and as well as our executive director of DEI, too. So two parallel processes. We're going to really work hard to recruit some good people into those positions so that we can continue the, the great work that Clarissa Hightower and Dr. Williams had done for us. I want to introduce to you Kim Noah. Kim is the wonderful person sitting next to Jennifer Jacobson's. She's going to be doing a presentation on the budget while Jennifer enjoys some well-deserved vacation time, a pre-planned vacation, pre-COVID, that she's going to be able to go on. And so I wanted to make sure you're familiar with her, but we're in good hands with her presenting on the budget in August for us. And I guess that's, I did have, I don't know if you all know who Ken Moore is. I had lunch with Ken Moore, who was the, a former deputy superintendent from 1980, retired in 1988, who gave me some great historical perspective on the district. When he, when the district had, he started in 1958, when the district had 2,000 students and 200 employees. So that was a fun meeting to be able to get that history. He worked up till 1998 and filled me in on some things. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Director Perkins.
Thank you. Wow, he would have been, I was a student then.
Even I wasn't on the board yet.
Yeah, nobody, nobody here was on the board. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments by the school board. Any comments?
Not today.
Not today.
Government? Quiet meeting. What can I say? I appreciate everybody doing all the good work. And now, future agenda items. Are there any future agenda items proposed by members of the board?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, hearing none. We will move to the part of our meeting for public comments. Let's see if I can get this out. Any community member wishing to address the board may do so. During the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature, each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation, if any. Two people have signed up. The first one is, and as I read these names, I invite you to correct my pronunciation. Jenny Vertiska? Vertiska. I apologize. Ms. Vertiska?
I'll just ask if you use the microphone. Hello? Hello, school board members and superintendent. My name is Jenny Vertiska, and I have two students in the district. This is my fourth time speaking here and my third time reminding you that I filled out the Google form stating I would like to participate in a follow-up session regarding budget cuts. I have also emailed my school board representative a week ago and have not received a response. I have repeatedly asked for you to involve the public in the budget cut discussion, and you are not yet including us. You still have time to send the budget back to the superintendent and have him rework it, so the cuts are not made to the student-facing services. Make him earn his salary. You make the teachers certainly earn theirs by doing more with less. It is time the district does the same. You recently had two high-level positions become vacant. Instead of hiring someone to fill those roles, delegate the responsibilities among the remaining staff. This is what you seem to expect at the school and classroom level. If you would listen to your community and allow us to be involved and voice our opinions, perhaps we could find a compromise that satisfies both families and administrators. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person on the list is Khan Dermonal. Hi, Khan. If you'd like to stand a little bit to the right so that we can see you, just a little bit further.
There you go.
There you are. We can't see you over the table.
Okay, okay.
Thanks so much.
Hi, my name is Khan. I have been in Excel since two years. I was waiting to be an Excel student in fourth grade, too, but I was destroyed with the news that Excel is canceled. When I was a baby, like three years old, I liked to do, I liked to become an astronaut. Since then, I was like space and interested with science. Fourth grade Excel is all about space and astronomy, but because of not, not enough money, I can't go to this class. When my mom told the news, I was broken. I cried for many hours. If I have any money, I could give to the people who closed Excel, so the class will go on, but now I'm heartbroken. Bye.
Thank you for your comments, Khan.
Thank you, Khan.
I believe that's the whole list. The next item on the agenda is adjournment. I'll call for us to adjourn until next time, and we'll take some time to sign papers and still be around. That's the meeting. Thank you very much for coming.